City Council order, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
President.
Kuz.
Here.
Harris.
President.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Will you please stand in and do the point?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First business we have tonight is a public hearing on an order in thirteen seventeen thirteen, increasing water rates by five percent. They close out of regular meeting, they are in a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to that tonight? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Paul Seer from EC Phillips &amp; Son, and I'm here on to support the, excuse me, support the five percent increase across the board that has been recommended by KPU staff for the water rates. Some of the proposed increases substantially increase our fixed costs, and this is problematic for us, as it would be for anyone doing business in Ketchikan now or in the future. After many years of working under this water rate structure, we have formulated our business plan accordingly. It's hard to believe water is the issue here in Ketchikan that actually should be an asset used to attract and keep businesses in Ketchikan. As one of the largest, if not the largest employer of full-time and seasonal employees here in Ketchikan, it is our hope that we would be afforded ample opportunity to alter or change our business plan prior to any dramatic changes being made to municipal services. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. John?
Yep, good evening, my name's John Scoblick. I live at thirty-eight oh six Fairview Avenue, and I'm an employee of Trident Seafoods, and I work at seven-twenty Stedman. The water rate issue at hand all boils down to a few simple things to me. This is all about making a balanced budget for the KPU water department and filling the plus or minus one hundred and forty thousand dollar gap that currently exists. The whole issue is about the cost of water infrastructure, pipes, valves, tanks, and everything else that physically allow the water to flow out to all the KPU water customers, large and small. Seafood processors have again been singled out and targeted unfairly for reasons totally beyond their control regarding potential new water rates. The staff has recommended a five percent across-the-board water rate increase to balance the budget. Who besides the staff would have more expertise in water department issues and how to solve them regarding the budget? I urge you to listen to the paid experts, the staff. All options to balance the budget other than the five percent across-the-board option should be dismissed and forgotten because they are not fair and equitable to all the users in our community. This issue is all about infrastructure costs and water delivery to all customers, not the amount of water available or the cost of treating the water. Every KPU water customer uses the infrastructure and is charged on a line-size basis. The residential water service line in our city system, the residential water service lines in our city water system make up eighty-five point six percent of all lines. The fish processors' water service lines in the city of Ketchikan system make up point two, two-tenths, less than one percent of all the lines. Why should the smallest user of water service line infrastructure even be considered to balance the budget for the entire community? Fish processors have been unfairly targeted because their usage rate. Every customer is charged by the service line size, not by meter rate. That system was designed by the city. Yes, the fish processors use a lot of water, and that is no understatement. But again, consumption is not the issue. The fish processors have met with the city and will continue to meet with the city to address the other issues regarding consumption and how they may better structure the water rates. Fish processors all sit next to a copious supply of seawater that could be treated and used in their facilities. If they are pushed to do that, their consumption rate of public city water would be greatly reduced and would create another budget issue that nobody at this table can measure tonight. Local fish processors pay a raw fish tax for every pound of fish that they process. Ketchikan is the salmon capital of the world, and there are hundreds of thousands, possibly sometimes millions of dollars that can come to the city via the fish processors. Is that not a large monetary contribution to the city? I strongly support the staff recommendation of a five percent across-the-board increase to water rates to balance the water budget. It is fair and equitable, and that is what the experts have advised you to do. We measure the rain here by the foot in Ketchikan. It's not about the amount of the water. It's about the pipes that everybody in this city uses. Fish processors are one of the few remaining economic engines in our community, and they shouldn't be the only minority group targeted to make up budget shortfalls for water infrastructure. I thank you very much for your time and attention regarding this very serious city issue, and have copies of my presentation. Ask them out if you'd like. I also emailed every council member and mayor a copy of this as well.
Does anybody have any questions for John? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to speak for the public hearing? CNN will close the public hearing, we're back in regular session. That brings us down to communications. You have something from the Forest Service, five-year review, comment period extension. And then that brings us to persons to be heard. Doug, you want to start us off?
My name's Doug Andrew, I'm here representing Annabelle's Restaurant and Fish Pirate Restaurant. What I'm here to talk about is the liquor licenses that have been coming up before the boards. This is a very serious issue. You guys have given two or three away for free, and there's, from what I understand, somewhere between two and six more people coming down the pike on this thing. So I just want to talk a little bit about, how many of these things are you guys going to hand out? Problem is, is people have paid for these in good conscience and pay a lot of money. I have a guy that I know just paid sixty thousand dollars for his liquor license, and one of the guys that are going to be asking for a free one are going to be coming down and within the next few weeks, and he's within a hundred feet of two other liquor licenses that have been bought and paid for. He's going to be asking for a free one. So I just don't understand where it comes off where we're giving these liquor licenses away. There's supposed to be like limited entry, and now all of a sudden, they're just like proliferating. And so anybody who owns a regular license with alcohol and beer and wine, it's worth about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The beer and wine license that just got purchased was going to be within a hundred foot of this, one that's going to be asked for free, he just purchased it for sixty thousand dollars. Now you guys gave one to the pizza fellow who's got, who's a very nice guy and has a very nice product, but he's got three other pizza places he's competing against that all put money out for these things. This area is already, as far as the ABC Board is already saturated as far as the number of licenses that are supposed to be put out. So what's going to come down to is the problem now is you guys have given these licenses away, so now the next guy is going to be expecting one. So if you deny him, then he's going to have a beef, and all of us that paid for ours has a beef if you give them away and saturate the market. So I guess my end point would be is, who's going to pay the financial harm to the people that have paid for these licenses when you guys are getting them out for nothing? So that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Doug? Doug, I have a couple of questions, so it's good.
Doug, are there any licenses, beer and license or the full thing available for purchase right now?
I'm not sure if I know the truth. But the point is, is it's limited entry. It's just like if seniors, if a guy wanted to go sane and there wasn't any sane, if you offer enough money, somebody would sell you the license.
Thanks, Doug. That brings us to Kay Andrews.
Good evening, my name is Kay Andrew. I live at five oh six Tower Road, Ketchikan, Alaska. I'm a lifelong resident of Ketchikan, and I'd like to also speak to you. I am representing Annabelle's Famous Cake and Chatterhouse and the Fish Pirates Saloon. I spoke to you guys a couple of years ago when this very issue came up, and I would like to pretty much say the same thing that Doug has reiterated. We paid for our licenses, we paid a large amount of money. We have been in this business, once we were in it for eleven years in the Arti Bar, and now we've been, this will be our eleventh season at Annabelle. We've worked very hard, as everybody does in business. You have to, or you don't make it. And I just have a real problem with giving these licenses out for anything. So I had a couple of questions. I have a book, I'm sure you guys are all aware of it. It's the Alcohol Beverage Book. And went through a few of the questions in here. So my question is, is how many free licenses are we allowed to give out in the community, the city of Ketchikan? Because it's a city-borough thing. I'd like to know how many we're supposed to be allowed to give out and how many we actually have on the market right now. The other question is, one of the things in the book talks about that to get a license, you can have no more than one alcohol beverage restaurant place for every fifteen hundred people in population. So what is the population of the city of Ketchikan? Are we saturated? Now, the ABC Board says we are. They leave it up to control of the governing body to decide really whether they can allow any more licenses in the community or not. I tried to get a hold of them to find out what this was, but no one answered my call today. So I would just like to say that I'm very much against giving these licenses out. To my knowledge, there is a couple for sale. If there isn't, then you go find one, because they are out there. Bring me enough money, I'll sell you mine. Maybe I'll sell mine and come in and apply for a free one. They're that easy to get, so that's all I have. Thank you.
We'll get you some answers.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us down to Jason Custer.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jason Custer, and I reside at twelve sixty Millar Street. I work for the city of Saksman as Saksman's Development Coordinator, and I also work as the Chairman and spokesperson of the Mahoney Lake Hydro Partnership, which is a public-private partnership comprised of the city of Saksman, Cape Fox Corporation, and Alaska Power and Telecon. The Mahoney Lake Partnership encourages the city of Ketchikan to move forwards in analyzing the future individual sale of SEPA projects and fully concurs with all recommendations presented by City Manager Amalon. The Southeast Alaska Integrated Resource Plan, or IRP, commissioned by the Alaska State Legislature, characterizes SEPA as an "inflexible utility business structure" on page three dash three, stating as follows. A joint action agency, SEPA, operates as a non-jurisdictional generation and transmission entity servicing southern southeast Alaska. SEPA by contract is obligated and required to provide its services only to the three communities of Petersburg, Wrangell, and Ketchikan. This system has no open access rules which would allow for interconnections with other utility systems. Under the terms of power sales agreements, the SEPA system is not economically dispatched. Construction of new state-funded capital projects may require these structures to be changed so that the benefits from state funds could be equally distributed. Please allow me to read from a letter I submitted on January ninth of this year to Ketchikan's elected officials, probably all of you, which describes a possible alternative arrangement. As southeast Alaska's energy needs become more pressing, I hear a growing number of community and business leaders speak to the frustrating challenge of developing new energy resources vis-à-vis SEPA's existing power sales agreements. This community frustration with SEPA has been exacerbated by SEPA's recent decision to cancel operating agreements with KPU and the Thomas Bay Power Authority for the Swan Lake and Taiyi Lake projects and consolidate operations with a single, as-yet undetermined operator at the expense of existing local jobs. One solution to these problems would be to divest generation resources currently owned by SEPA back to local communities which already have first rights to energy and capacity. SEPA would change into a regional transmission organization, or RTO, which would maintain and operate the current and future transmission system for any public or private organizations that wishes to utilize these assets for a reasonable fee. This type of reorganization would provide access to transmission on a transparent basis under tariffed rules. All communities would pay the same. Municipalities would no longer be tasked with the challenge of collaboratively running SEPA and instead could focus on addressing their community's individual needs. This arrangement would make consumers, southeast Alaska's utilities, responsible for providing for their own needs in the manner they feel is best. Communities would be free to operate their own power generation sources, construct new energy projects, purchase power from other communities over SEPA's transmission lines, or operate diesel generators. Another important thought, that's the end of my letter from January. Here's another thought. Swan Lake will be relicensing in 2030, and Taiyi will be relicensing in 2034. There will be a significant risk to SEPA and its member communities during the relicence process. There have been situations in other locations in the U.S. where an intervenor in the relicence tries to gain rights to energy output, particularly if the initial investment was publicly funded via state or federal sources. Here is yet another reason that Ketchikan, Wrangell, and Petersburg should collaborate to obtain direct ownership of Taiyi and Swan as soon as possible before they are forced to share the wealth and benefit with others who paid for the projects indirectly but have not yet received benefit. As you evaluate the function which you believe SEPA should be fulfilling for our region, please bear in mind SEPA's comments on the Southeast Alaska Integrated Resource Plan, available on the Alaska Energy Authority's website. And I have a link to the source for anybody who wants to check that out. SEPA's comments decry the syrup planning process for lack of appropriate stakeholder involvement, stating as follows. Public stakeholder involvement was very limited. An IRP should be a transparent and participatory planning process. It contrasts with traditional planning that is typically top-down with public consultation occurring only as a last step when plans are virtually complete. A successful integrated resource plan process starts at the bottom and works its way up. If you want the public and ratepayers to be part of this solution, they need to be aware of the problems so the needs and ideas of all parties with a stake in the future of energy resources are considered. So those were SEPA's comments on the IRP. In closing, the Mahoney Partnership supports a Ketchikan, Wrangell, and Petersburg-led initiative to conduct bottom-up evaluation of divestment of SEPA's resources and hope that this approach may lead to conditions which facilitate addition of greatly needed generation resources such as Mahoney Lake. Thank you for your time and the hard work that you all do, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, Trey.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, good to be back again. Just wanted to touch on a few points. Today, there have been a few inconsistencies with recent public testimony. It was stated that SEPA was created for the sole purpose of developing the Swan-Taiyi Intertie. This is simply not true. In fact, the Third Amendment of the restated Joint Action Agency Agreement, often referred to as the JAA, relating to the Southeast Alaska Power Agency, mutually agreed upon and signed by the cities of Ketchikan, Petersburg, and Wrangell states in section five and then several subsections, D, E, P, and R, in regard to the powers of the agency. The agency has the power subject to the limitations and requirements of the agreement and applicable law, rules, and regulations too. And I'll just cite E, design, develop, construct, own, manage, maintain, improve, expand, operate additional generating and transmission facilities. So I just wanted to, that's more of a public clarification so people don't have the misconception that SEPA was just structured for the Swan-Taiyi. So in short, the JAA clearly contemplates and provides a comprehensive framework defining SEPA's role far beyond the Swan-Taiyi Intertie. SEPA's role is also acutely defined in our mission statement, which I believe was brought before and supported by this council on March twenty-first. For the benefit of those not present at that time, SEPA's mission is to provide the lowest wholesale power rate consistent with sound utility planning and business practices. We exist for the long-term benefit of our member utilities and the ratepayers, providing unified regional leadership for project development and prudent management of our interconnected power system. I think it's important to note that SEPA's wholesale power rate has been six point eight cents per kilowatt hour for over fifteen years. And this translates into a retail rate that is one of the lowest and most stable in the entire state of Alaska. Our member utilities have also enjoyed periodic rebate payments as determined by our Board of Directors, which is comprised of representatives from the three communities. As a final thought for your consideration, there are only about twelve thousand meters total between the interconnected communities of Ketchikan, Petersburg, and Wrangell to spread the costs. Development of additional power resources for children, for our children and future generations will be very expensive, and a unified approach will prosper over isolationism. SEPA is here for your benefit and provides a strong regional presence that can be leveraged to better serve the best long-term interests of the ratepayers. I'd be happy to come back at a later time and discuss the details of the benefits SEPA provides to Ketchikan and our other member communities. I think it's important that people understand those benefits that they're getting from SEPA and the services we provide. The six point eight cents that we charge for power, there's a lot of things that are bundled into that payment. So I won't take up any more of your time tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anybody have any questions for Trey?
Yeah.
Oh, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, Trey, earlier on, Mr. Custer spoke about the Mahoney project and the ability to sell power into the grid or Ketchikan. Could you explain a little bit about the pending RFO?
Certainly. SEPA has undertaken a recent effort to put together what we call a request for power, a request for offers of power and energy, also referred to as RFO, similar to an RFP which you guys deal with all the time. It's basically an open invitation for power providers to come in and propose to selling into our system. So what was told to you earlier by Mr. Custer is not exactly factual. There are mechanisms, and there's opportunities for people to come sell into our system. One thing you have to remember, the bonding for Swan and Taiyi projects is the security for that is part of the reason why we have the power sales agreement. And I think that's very important for people to understand. So if a new project comes along, say it's going to cost a hundred million dollars to build a hydro project, you're going to have to go bond for that, and that bond is going to also have to be secured by a power sales agreement of some sort. So I hope I answered your question there, Mr. Severson.
Thank you, Trey. The other question I had, if it's okay, Your Honor, is, the power sales agreement, that was developed by the cooperation of the three communities. That wasn't developed by SEPA prior to its existence, was it?
Not to my knowledge. That is signed by the three member utilities. They agreed to that. And it's important to remember that that has provided a very stable power rate for the community here for economic development. It was spoken about earlier tonight where these type of utilities are critical for economic development in your area. One thing that the power sales agreement has done for you is really stabilized that for over fifteen years for you.
Anything else, Bob?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Ray. That's everybody on the list. Is there anybody else here who'd like to address the council tonight? Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I appreciate the time that you put in and your efforts that you volunteer on a weekly basis to try to make the community a better place to live. My name is Andy Raugh, and I came to Ketchikan in the sixties. And like a lot of people, didn't have a whole lot of money. I was pretty broke when I got here, but I worked hard. And there was a tremendous amount of opportunity here at the time. And I'd like to see that it's that way for the younger generation that's coming along. I'd like to speak a little bit about this SEPA arrangement myself. In the seventies, I was a journeyman carpenter, seventies and eighties, for Ketchikan local. And was one of the first persons that was dispatched on the Swan Lake Dam project to set up the camp and then to later on go on with the dam building construction. And I was one of two people who were left on that job to finish the project at the end, to do the punch list and make sure that it was ready to turn over to Ketchikan Public Utilities. My brother was the first person out on Swan Lake to take over as operations and maintenance foreman for the Swan Lake project and was in that position for twelve years and lived out there, worked on it, and ate, lived, and breathed that project, loved it. And had numerous written comments on the way that he ran that plant. During the duration of that construction project, I had the opportunity to become friends with three RWABEC engineers who had developed and designed that dam and learned a whole lot about that and a whole lot about some of the other feasibility studies that they had done for power generation in this area. I would like to offer my input on some of these ideas. I was kind of disillusioned when it came out in the paper by the SEPA CEO that if anybody had any better ideas, bring them on. I mean, that sounded like some kind of a challenge or somebody wanted to pick a fight. Well, I didn't want to pick a fight, so I didn't want to get involved. So I do have better ideas, I think, than compromising the structural integrity of Swan Lake Dam at an expense of a couple of hundred million dollars if we lost that dam by raising it sixteen feet. And I can tell you that I don't care what engineer you're going to talk to that might say that that's going to work, you're going to compromise that dam if you try to raise that dam sixteen feet. For one thing, a lot of you probably don't even know this, but there isn't a stick of rebar in that dam, with the exception of the spillway. That dam, another thing you probably don't know, a lot of you don't know, is that from summertime to wintertime, it moves six inches from expansion and contraction. It's also the largest, or it was at the time, the largest triple curvature dam on the planet. And it's designed on the principle of an eggshell. The harder that something is pushed against that design, the tighter it locks itself into the mountain. The dam curves around the canyon, it curves up the face, and it's also tapers from the bottom to the top. At the top, it's six feet thick. Adding sixteen feet to the top of that dam is a huge risk. And I don't think this community can afford to build a new dam or risk the lives of powerhouse operators at the bottom of it if it gave out. RWABEC told me at the time that the dam could sustain RWABEC told me at the time that the dam could sustain a pretty good earthquake if it was centered in Dixon Ensign, but they weren't sure if it could take a direct hit by an earthquake. So how much is it going to be able to hold if Dixon Ensign quake took place and there's another 16 feet of lake pushing behind it? So these are things that you need to consider, but there are other alternatives, and RWABEC did explore some of those things. And I'd like to go into them. I don't know if I have time to do that here, but I am concerned a little bit about this SEPA contract we have because we no longer have control of Swan Lake Dam from the Bailey Powerhouse. We have to go through Wrangell in order to turn on or shut down a generator or whatever. A lot of this is being run from a laptop that somebody has in Idaho, from what I understand. Another thing that I don't understand is why nobody can get a city Wrangell. One of their beefs is that you can't look into the finances of SEPA. We don't know where their money's gone. But all of those things aside, I just think that there needs to be a lot better opportunity for public to give their input without being faced with some sort of a challenge right off the bat, like bring it on. I didn't appreciate that comment, and I'm not too thrilled with SEPA's management.
If you have ideas, make sure you get them to us. Another thing, finances, they are readily available. I review those all the time. I can give you some. Dick?
Yeah, Andy, I was just going to make a similar comment. Anytime you've got a question, the CEO of SEPA will talk to you. And if you've got good ideas, he'll talk to you. The finances are totally open to anybody. And Mr. Severson and I and Mr. Bergeron both sit on that board. We know when we can go get those things, and there's no secrets. But go talk. You've got some good ideas about and concerns about the raising it, and go talk to the CEO, because he will talk to you and those guys will listen. Don't worry about what appeared to be a challenge.
And one other thing that I wanted to bring up was that previous management here in Ketchikan spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to study the weather and about. The only thing they found out from those studies was that the weather doesn't, they can't predict the weather. And the only thing that's changed since that study is the price of diesel fuel's gone up. So we need to find more, we need to develop more sources of hydropower. We're running out, and we're going to be in a world of hurt if we have to keep running these diesels all the time. When that dam, when the Taiyi project went into effect, we were all told that this was going to be the end of the diesels. But we were really oversold on that Taiyi, Intertie project. But it can be utilized, and it can be utilized efficiently, but we need to get our politicians involved in a couple of directions, which I'd like to discuss.
Thank you, Andy.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Andy and I talked before about the Swan Lake project, and I appreciate all the information he has, and I have them, we get in contact with the engineers. But Andy, I think that the actual raise on the dam is only going to be about a five or six foot ponywalk, from what I understand, on the top. But I think that our engineers are looking forward to meeting with you and talking to you about construction, get a lot of the history that you have. There's probably very few people around that have that anymore, so I appreciate you stepping forward.
Yeah, I'm one of the ones, the last ones left. A lot of them are already gone by, but so, get me while you can. I might be the next one.
Thank you, Andy. Stick around a while. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Seeing then, we'll move on to consent agenda. The only ones I saw to add, I was hoping, would be 6A1 Uniform Code Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, which we did last week, 7A1 and 7A4. Those are the only three I had unless somebody else had something else. Any objections to those?
You said 6A1?
Yes.
Unfinished business?
Yeah, that ordinance on the buildings.
Oh, okay. I think we could probably add 7A2 also, change order on.
If nobody has any objection.
None here, Your Honor.
Okay, so we have four items that we're going to put on the consent agenda. 6A1, 7A1, 7A2, and 74.
What about 5, 7A5, the one for the cemetery? People want to discuss that?
I had a question or two.
Okay.
All right, we'll put those on there. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'd move to consent.
Move in second. Madam, can you read the items?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of March 21st, 2013. Application for restaurant designation permit, Best Western Landing and Jeremiah's. Amendment number one, lease between the City of Ketchikan and the United States Department of Agricultural Forest Service, Southeast Alaska Discovery Center Parking Lot. Budget transfer, equipping and outfitting of police department vehicles. Contract number 1234, change order number four, Jackson Street Area Reconstruction Project, SNS General Contractors and Equipment Rentals, Inc. Substituting source of funding, contract number 1238A, City Hall Exterior and Interior Renovations, Dawson Construction, Inc. Exempting telecommunications, billing software, and maintenance support from competitive bid, written quotation requirements, CalmSoft. Ordinance number 131722, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings by adding new subsections relating to the imposition and recovery of the cost of repair and demolition of dangerous buildings, second reading. Contract number 1220A, contract number one final, or change order number one final, with the Bodden Street Apartments, Abatement and Demolition with BAM. Contract number 1234, change order number five, Jackie Street Area Reconstruction with SNS Contractors. And a budget transfer for the purchase of a Bobcat 5600 Tool Cat Utility Work Machine with Craig Taylor Equipment Company.
All right. Anybody have any questions, so they can roll, call the roll?
Harris?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Bergeron?
Aye.
Okay, that passed unanimously. That brings us down to 6B1, ordinance 131713, increasing water rates by 5%. Second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approving second reading, ordinance number 131713, increasing water rate by 5%, providing for a date for the public hearing and establishing an effective date.
Move in second. Dick?
Yeah, I, Your Honor, I still have some concerns about how these rates are distributed because in the water rate study, it shows a lot of discrepancies, but I really don't have a good solution or suggestion as to what they are. And Mr. Scobely brought up an idea there about, you know, the number of lines and so forth, and maybe at this point in time, we just need to use a straight 5%. But if we do, I think we need to bring back some information to the council concerning the individual cost of the structure, I mean, what it costs of the delivery system and the cost of the water going through it, because they're two different things. And he made it clear, I may not agree with what it will come out to, but our cost of water is going to go up, especially if we start treating it more than we are. And we're putting a lot of water through the system. And to me, it's like putting gas in your car. You cut your car, you take care of it. You get the gas, you take care of it. And maybe before we adjust the rates, and like I say, I still think we need to adjust them because some users are paying less than they should, some maybe more. We need some more information about it, and everybody, I think, had those, if they can recall, and I did not recall. I apologize to Bob for jumping because I was working off of the first set of numbers. Residential folks, according to our study, on cost of service should go up 6% total, whereas it looks like multifamily and small commercial should go, are paying quite a bit more than they should, and large commercial are probably in the ballpark of down about 5%. But yet fish processors are still underpaying according to this study, and we need to figure out how to make this equitable, and I don't know what it is. I don't have a better solution, unless somebody does.
Carl, I have a question before Sam.
Go ahead.
I have that memo to you from Bob about the implementation of a meter-based system for the water division, and it goes down to the end where we talk about meter for all large commercial fish and customers and fish processors, and use a flat rate structure for small commercial, and then I believe it's a flat rate for residential. How close are we to moving on this? Because I, I mean, there's, you know, the line size, you know, we're going on now, and now we've talked about using usage, and if we go to that kind of system, then we've got to come up with some kind of meter rate. And I know you guys want to continue meeting with the processors. What's the timeline? I mean, that's what I am interested in, and like to get into kind of some kind of ordinance form and done. What are we looking at?
Mr. Newell and Mr. Kleineker are working on that issue now. My understanding was that the council wanted to keep that discussion separate from this particular rate increase. Bob, I don't know what your timing is. If you could address that.
I can't give you a definitive time right now. What we are in the process of doing is going back and looking at the SPF study and to make sure that the rate structure that they're proposing, using meters for larger commercial customers and a flat rate structure for small customers, to make sure that the revenue streams are there. We're not sure if they are. We have done some work already, and what we're finding out is there could be a possible revenue shortfall. So we need to make sure that if we go with this structure, that we're going to generate the revenues we need to cover the cost of operation. And that's going to take some time to do that.
Wouldn't we be basing the residential rates at what they are now and looking at?
Well, the residential rate wouldn't change all that much. They would pretty much stay where they are. There might be, you know, a slight increase, but the biggest impact will be on to the commercial customers, both the small and the large commercial customers and the processors.
And then when you come back, you'd have a metered rate scheduled for us?
Well, it depends on what the council wants to do. I mean, you could also implement a flat rate structure for large customers. It just depends on which way you want to go.
Okay. Well, I guess not everybody's seen this, so I guess I'm picking up what I was interested in. Because it is, I mean, we've been talking about going, changing it to usage instead of line size, so I was just hoping that was farther along, because then I'd say, let's just don't even do a raise and wait till we come up with this new system. But if it's going to be months next year?
Well, it won't be next year. We should take some more time to put it together and to make sure that, like I said, that we're going to have the revenue stream to pay the bills, that's what it boils down to.
Sam?
I have a couple of questions from the manager. Carl, is there, I'll start with the rate structure. Is there any rate structures that you know of that are derived from the percentage of service lines? And you're, like, if I own 0.2% of the service lines, that I pay 0.2% of the water that's used?
Most of the rate structures I'm familiar with, council member Bergeron, are based on a metered water system.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, when we had the consultant come up and we were talking about the inequities in our rate structure, I think the thing that I took home, and I just wanted you to confirm if my memory is correct or not, is that the fairest way to sell water is to meter for it and you pay for what you use. Is that what our consultant said?
That's what our consultant said, and it's important to recognize that when you develop that rate, it's based on exactly what council member Coos said. You've got two components. You've got the cost of your treatment, and you've got the cost of your distribution system, and both have to be accounted for. The cost to produce the water is going up just as much as your incurring debt service to fix the cost of your distribution system. So the rates have got to be based on those two components.
Right, and so, and really and truly, the only pragmatic way to do that is to incorporate all of those costs to all of the users, regardless of how many percentages, whatever pipe you have or what size. But the fairest way is to bill for what you actually use.
Long-term, that is going to require a significant investment to meter, you know.
That's true, but we also, if I remember correctly, and that's why I'm asking to bring this up and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we were fairly accurately able to extrapolate in general what the residential users used versus what the commercial users were, because some folks were metered, we backed off what we had of the metered folks, and then we also checked our meter and what we produced, and we were able to extrapolate what went to the residential ratepayers, divided that up, and came up with an estimate on what was equitable per the average use. Is that correct?
I agree with that.
So, again, and so we go back, and I, you know, my point is, is that I think that we are able to fairly accurately define and defend who is using the water, and especially the folks that have the commercial things that have the meters on them. And the point that I'm making is, is that I think it's pretty obvious that the residential ratepayers have been subsidizing the commercial ratepayers because they're paying more per than the commercial guys are going forward. And we had this discussion the last time, is that by golly, we're going to do something about it next time. Well, it's next time. And so I just wanted to let my other fellow council members know that I'm not inclined to have that trend continue. And I think that we can defend who's using what. We know what the cost of producing this stuff is. We all absorb rising costs of gasoline, of oil, of groceries, of things that go up that are out of our control, and we live with it. But I don't think, I think we are here to fairly and equitably charge for the services that we deliver. And so I think going forward, if we know that there is an inequity, I think that we have an obligation to address it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Deanne?
I agree with what Sam is saying in principle, but I also hear what the fish processors are saying in concerning, you know, we're going from one system. I think it would be difficult to all of a sudden change the game plan and say, okay, we've been charging you this much for this long, but next year, tomorrow, we're going to change it and increase it by, you know, however much to make it equitable. I think that something like that would have to be done incrementally. I just, I mean, they all, I think anyone would need a chance to kind of reconfigure business plans and processes and whatnot. Maybe there's ways to conserve water usage that they hadn't implemented before, but now they can look into things. I mean, you're talking about a pretty large change in how you're going to be billing one sector of our community, and I just think that it should be done in a fair and equitable manner and not just overnight kind of thing. I just, I would go into shock if I were going to get a bill like that increased, you know, without some ample time to make some adjustments in my budget and my business plan and my future, so.
You have Dick then Sam.
Yeah, again, I guess the reason why I stuck with 8, with the 5% now is then, is if we were to do what I think we should do, which is raise some of these rates, and some of them at some point in time, probably a fair amount, it's not fair to hit them right now if they're beginning of the season, they haven't budgeted for it, they don't know what's going on. So to me, we live with what we've got here, and we have to have a target of by fall, having a solution to these rates so that the people can plan for next year's budget. And it gives them a chance to plan for it. But I, you know, I agree with Sam and Deanne that it's not easy, and we've got to tweak, we've got to tweak something, but dumping on them without being able to budget for it and so forth is not the fair way to do it. But if somebody heard and we should, it's not a fair way to do it either, but we do it.
Sam?
Couple of points. I don't, this water rate is going to bring an additional, how many dollars, Mr. Manager? 140,000?
An annualized basis, about 140?
140,000 dollars, which is not going to, we have an approximate $400,000 deficit in our water division, so we're not talking about making our water division whole on this singular rate increase. I have great empathy for the business plans and then the challenges of being self-employed, having been self-employed most of my entire life. You know, if we talk about raising rates again, it's a matter of fairness and equity. I know I talk about my day job a lot, and I get to go around the community firsthand and see the ability of some folks to pay these rate increases and some of the choices that they have to make when we start to take more money out of their budgets, their budgets, when they're taking away food, medicine, healthcare to pay a water bill, or we're talking about making our electrical rates higher. I mean, I only wish you guys could job shadow me for a while and to get a real appreciation for what I get to see all the time. So I want you to keep that one in mind. I mean, you can't, I mean, these people aren't talking about tax deduction, they're talking about life choices. These are people with children, these are people- These are people with children, these are people that are poor, they're moderately income, they're retired. Let's not forget those people. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, this is probably directed towards Carl or Bob, but, you know, you go back to that study and, and without addressing the inequities, I see in there where there's a continued trend to raise rates over the next five to 10 years, up to where we may be as much as 65% increase between now and, and that endgame. Could you, if, you know, this 5% we're going to do now, do you see us coming back? I noticed that in the Senate budget, we didn't get any money for the Shawn Bar project, so if we're going to continue to try to do capital projects, we don't have the money to do them.
I, I would concur with that, Councilmember Severson. I think what I'd like to try to do is take the concept that the mayor raised earlier in his remarks, talk to the finance director, bring the council back something, the understanding that while there may be disproportionate assessment against the larger commercial and industrial users, it's something that is going to have to be phased in over a number of years, that it's not something that can be implemented all at once. I, I clearly understand that.
All right. Anybody else? Matt, here's home.
Um, we have a lot of resources here, but a lot of resources are really out of our control and water is one of those that we do control. And I would hate to see us significantly impact the business plans and the operations of the processors to the point where they become just freezing plants and shipping everything out and all the, the other year-round jobs and the, the other things that they do perform in terms of second, secondary processing, have all that and get shipped out of state. I think we need to keep that in consideration. I'm fully aware that my water bill is going to go up, I'm not happy about it, but I don't want to see us drive businesses to say it's cheaper to do businesses, business down in Washington where it's closer and we can get cheaper labor.
I agree with you. And the processors, we've got to keep them in the dialogue the whole time, so. All right, color roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
No.
Harris?
Okay.
Severson?
Yeah.
Coos?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to one. That brings us down to new business 7A3, budget transfer enrollment and participation in Horton Health Initiative Wellness Program. Can I stand up for this? Go ahead.
I move the city council approve enrollment and participation in the Horton Health Initiative Wellness Program, option number two. Employee and spouse authorize a budget transfer in the amount of $60,000 from the appropriated reserves of the general fund to the Human Resources Division's 2013 Technical Services Account, 63512, and direct the city manager to implement the program on behalf of the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Marty?
Um, the, the medical center, we have a similar program and it's been helpful to the employees. I think this could be a real good thing for the city employees. It promotes getting in better health and keeping in better health as a method of controlling healthcare costs down the road.
Deanne?
In my office, we do a quarterly newsletter to all of our group health clients. And it's ironic that this month, this quarter, was dedicated to health and wellness platforms and employer-sponsored settings like this. My one concern when I read through some of the description was it centered really on exercise and, and movement and that, and diet and whatnot. And I think there's a component, especially, you know, in a southeastern town with the weather and darkness and whatnot, of mental health as well. That plays a factor in, in a lot of the different insurance claims that people incur. I think it's a good place to start, but I would want, you know, human resources and management and stuff to maybe keep in mind that there are some broader spectrums to a health and wellness platform than just movement and diet alone. But I'm really looking forward to seeing how the outcome of this is, because I've been trying to talk some of my groups into doing something similar. But it's very, very hard to measure the tangible results. You may start this, this year, but it could be years before you actually see some real results in terms of lower claim costs and whatnot. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this works out with the caveat to remember that there are a variety of other spectrums to wellness besides just moving and, and monitoring your food intake and that type of thing. But it's a good place to start.
Can I say this out first?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I hate to be negative, but we're asking for $60,000 here. Is that an annual thing, Carl?
That would be.
Pretty close?
Yeah.
I'd just hate to add another program at this point in time. And I know it's all wonderful, it's a wonderful thing and everything, but we're committing $60,000 annually. That's, I just wanted a note to the council. Marty, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to follow up on what Deanne said. I think she makes a really good point about the mental health aspects of it, too. But even if this only addressed, like, diabetes, we're seeing adult onset diabetes in children. And diabetes alone has got the potential of overwhelming our healthcare system entirely. And so I really think that our organizations and the ones that we belong to and others really need to start doing something proactively to try to stem the tide.
Okay. Dick, Sam, and Deanne.
Okay, two questions. One, this was talked about total employees, 300 employees, is that correct? That includes KPU and?
Yes, that's correct.
So why should not a proportion come out of KPU rather than general fund?
It will through the requisite transfers that we do. It's just the way it works. HR is funded through KPU on an annual basis. Bob, you want to?
Anyway, the illusion is it's all coming out of general.
It looks that way, I understand, but the intent is for KPU to pay.
You remember those interdepartmental charges?
Yeah, I do.
That's how we'll, we'll charge it back to KPU.
Okay, then.
And the other, and the other revenue generating fund for the city like the harbor, the port, solid waste and wastewater.
Okay, I guess the other question then is, at what point in time do we do a measurement to see whether we're accomplishing anything at all? One year, two years, three years? How long we got to go onto it before we presumably see a measurement of success?
I don't have a definitive answer to that, Councilmember Coos. I can tell you that for the past several years, we've been seeing double-digit increases in health insurance. I can just speak to my own, you know, I know the amount of money that our insurance company paid out on me last fall. Those are the kinds of things we hope to address as we encourage employees to lead a healthier and better lifestyle. Hey, do you want to add to that?
Well, as with any program that you take on, I, I do agree, measurement of, of how you're doing is, is absolutely important. And one of the first things that, that we would use as far as measuring tool is a level of participation, because we will be able to track not, you know, there, there are certain things that we'll get on a, either departmental level, you know, we'll get very limited information as far as on a personal, but as far as in numbers of people that are actually participating in the program, that are actually getting out, doing something, it's going to be in whether or not they are achieving the various levels. If, if the people aren't doing it, if, if they don't have the initiative to do it, if they're not achieving the levels, then the program doesn't work. But conversely, if they do, if people are out moving more, if they're, if, if diet and, and habits are changing, then that's going to be, you're going to see that in the people that are reaching the levels. It's as simple as that. The, whether we see a reduction in premium increases a year, two, two years, three years, five years down the road, that all remains to be seen, given the, the pool that we're in. But if our contribution is able to help lower the experience factor of, experience rates of the pool as a whole, then it would stand to reason that there would be some benefits of that.
I have a question. Go ahead, Sam.
Has there been, has, has this kind of thing, this program come up and there's been demonstrably lower rates because of the benefits to which you just referenced?
Bob, I might defer to Bob on that, because you had the discussions with, with Nancy Tucci. I don't have that locally. We have, I have nothing to speak to on that. On a, on, when you look at the Horton Health Initiatives, is the division, if you will, of the group that administers this program for those participative groups of 5,000 employees or less. Virgin Health Miles is the parent, the parent group, they're in the one, they'll do the ones of 10,000 or more. Virgin Miles has demonstrated that in the bigger corporations, in, in corporations such as IBM, they're one of those. They're seeing, but, but here again, they've been in the program several years. I mean, it's, it's new to us, but it's been out and available for quite some time.
So several years, that's $180,000 investment.
If it's continued on.
If you're willing to come in, Your Honor.
Keep going.
I, I think that, I think all of these things are a great idea. You know, in our, in our last thing, we, you know, voted to spend more money and here we're voting to spend more money again. I think healthness, health and wellness is a personal decision and mental health is a personal decision. And I think it's up to the individual to do that. Myself, I have a year-round thing for the rec center, which I don't use that often, but I still have it. So it's kind of like this thing, I've got it, but I don't use it, but I'm paying for it. But, you know, that's my decision as an individual. And I think that, I don't think that we're going to see the kind of returns that you're talking about here. I think we've got to watch every penny that we've got and I'm not going to support it. Thanks.
Deanne?
Sam brings up some really valid points and it's a gamble. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where you pay now and you implement these provisions and you hope the outcome is what you want it to be. Or you don't pay and you have one heart attack, one medevac, and you're into a couple hundred thousand dollar claim right there. So you can spend $60,000 this year and $60,000 next year, maybe prevent a heart attack or prevent a diabetic coma or, or something like that. You know, it's a gamble. Which one do you want to gamble on? Personally, I'd rather gamble on the employees being healthier and being more productive and, and stable than whether we're going to have a heart attack or a, you know, other complication in the group. But with that said, there, a comment that he made as well is that you're in a pool and you don't have any control over the rest of the pool. So your demographics may do really, really well and that's good for your, you know, absenteeism, production, all those things that keep employees at their desk. But whether you're really going to see the rate impact that you're hoping for, you know, it's, it's a gamble, because the rest of the pool could be the unhealthiest group of people in the whole state of Alaska, so.
And I, I don't disagree, but one thing, one thing that I would add, just to, to shirttail onto what you were saying, prevention. If, in, in the, in the context of one heart attack, one medevac, whatever it may be, if the program is successful to the point where it gets people thinking about their own health, they may be, may be in the position to be more in contact with their healthcare provider, get an earlier diagnosis of whatever it may be and be able to, to take the steps necessary to change it so that it doesn't become a big bill later.
With some of the groups that I work with, they had a person come on site and do a mini biometric kind of testing. They actually sent some individuals directly to the hospital after doing their little mini exam. I mean, it was that critical and the people had no idea that they were in that, that physical condition. But, you know, it's, it's really a gamble there, you know?
Absolutely.
But you have to start somewhere, too. And, and, you know, where do you begin that effort?
Individually.
Hold on.
How's that working for the health base?
I don't, I hear all you guys are talking. I mean, I just hate to add another program. I know it's probably a great program. I don't want to see the, I mean, I agree with Sam, personal responsibility. We voted for a rec center. People really want to get healthy, they can go do all kinds of stuff at a rec center. And I don't know how many health outfits are around. I don't think it's our job to, I mean, I want them to all be healthy, but I'm not going to, I don't want to fund it. There's other things I'd like to fund before that, so. Anybody else before we color roll? Bob, do you have anything?
Yes, Your Honor, being that Terry works for the finance department and I'm her husband, I may have a direct benefit if this were the past and my, am I allowed to vote on this or not?
We'll let you.
All right. Well, I, I, Your Honor, I tend to agree with you and Sam on this one. I think it's a great program. If we're in better financial safe and we didn't have as many things looking at us as we do, I'd probably say that this is fair money that would be useful at the time, but at this particular point in time, I think we have better uses for it.
Anybody else before we color roll? Matt?
I'll just go on record, I'm the same vote as Bob.
That's true. All right, color roll.
Severson?
No.
Bergeron?
No.
Coos?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, passes four to three. I lost my position, hold on. I'm trying to keep track. I'm supposed to do K R B tomorrow, so. All right, that brings us down, that passes six to one. That brings us down to 7A5, ordinance 131723, exempting the purchase of cemetery maintenance and operations services from, exempting the purchase of cemetery maintenance and operations services from competitive bidding and approving the agreement for Bayview Cemetery Maintenance Operations for 2013 to 2015. Do we have a motion, first reading?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council approve in first reading ordinance number 131723, exempting the purchase of cemetery maintenance and operations services from competitive bidding and approving the agreement for Bayview Cemetery Maintenance and Operations for 2013 to 2015. Do we have a motion? First reading.
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council approve in first reading ordinance number 131723, exempting the purchase of cemetery maintenance and operations services from competitive bidding and approving the agreement for Bayview Cemetery Maintenance and Operations for 2013 to 2015 between Robert S. Shelton, EBA PM Landscaping and the City of Ketchikan and Establishment Effectivity.
Moved in second. And Bob, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I just, I looked through the contract here and tried to figure out our deliverables and stuff. And I guess if we're approving this, we must be fairly satisfied with the, the care and maintenance that we're getting out there. Um, I guess what I would ask, is there any major capital projects that we're going to have him working on during this time period?
Mr. Mayor, to respond to Councilmember Severson's first question, yes, we are very satisfied with your landscaping. And that's why the ordinance is essentially before you.
Morgan Berry, Public Works Contracts and Grants Administrator. I believe the budget capital improvement projects for 2014 and out consist of parking, paving the parking area adjacent section nine. And actually, for this year, I believe installing fencing along the rock face. And, well, that doesn't fall under the capital improvement projects level, but it's drainage maintenance, which is extensive. It requires a lot of work.
Bob, did you hear that?
Your Honor, I can hear everybody else very well. It seems like Carl's mic is cutting in and out. It was fairly broken, but I think I got the drift of it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I answered my own question, so. Color roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Severson?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to 7A6, contract 1311, waterfront promenade, master planning, historic Ketchikan, Inc. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council through contract number 13-11, waterfront promenade, master planning between the City of Ketchikan and Historic Ketchikan, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $20,000. Authorized funding from the Port Department's 2013 Waterfront Promenade Master Plan Capital Account and direct the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city council.
Moved in second. Sam, do you want to add anything?
It's a fine thing to do, we should do it.
Anybody else? Color roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Morganberry Public Works Contracts and Grants Administrator. I believe the budgeted capital improvement projects for two thousand fourteen and out consist of, uh, parking, paving the parking area adjacent section nine. Um, and actually, for this year, I believe installing fencing along the rock face. And, well, that doesn't fall under the capital improvement project level, but it's drainage maintenance, which is extensive, it requires a lot of work.
Bob, did you hear that?
Your Honor, I can hear everybody else very well. Seems like Carl's mic is cutting in and out. It was fairly broken, but I think I got the drift of it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I answered my own question, so. Call a roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that bring, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us down to seven eight six, contract thirteen eleven, waterfront promenade, master planning, historic Ketchikan Inc. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council to the contract number thirteen dash one one, waterfront promenade, master planning between the city of Ketchikan and historic Ketchikan Inc. in the amount not to exceed $20,000. Authorized funding from the Port Department's twenty thirteen waterfront promenade master plan capital account and direct the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Move it in second. Sam, do you want to add anything?
It's a fine thing to do, we should do it.
Anybody else? Call a roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing, now brings us down to seven B, KPU, Ketchikan Public Utility, B one memorandum of understanding between the city of Ketchikan, Petersburg, Rangel, Alaska regarding analysis of the future individual sales of Southeast Alaska Power Agency Hydro Projects. Sam?
Your Honor, I made the city council direct the mayor and staff to take such action with respect to the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Ketchikan, Petersburg, Rangel, Alaska regarding the analysis of the future sales of the individual projects to the member communities and the future disposition of Southeast Alaska Power Agency as determined appropriate by the city councils.
Second.
Move it in second. Sam, did you want to say anything?
Well, I'm fully in support of this, that's what I'd like to start there. Um, I think that, uh, those that are for the status quo, and those who would like to see some change, I think that an independent study will solidify each position. And I think that there should be no reason to not do this. I think it fulfills a two thousand nine MOU that was begun with Petersburg, Rangel, and Ketchikan, and then this is just the completion of that. And I think that we should go forward and do it. Personally, my suspicion is, is that, um, I think that they're going to find some room for change within our organization, and, but we'll see. And I certainly appreciate and respect, and want to follow the manager's recommendation in this agenda item, which calls for a completely and separate and independent review by folks who have no financial, fiscal ties to anybody, and get a completely owned by us opinion here. So I would ask my fellow council members to support this agenda item as presented, and vote it up tonight, and not delay it. Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I think this item needs to be discussed, uh, early. I also think it needs to be, the whole council needs to understand how SEPA operates, and more information about them. Uh, so with that, I'm going to move to defer this item until the first meeting in July.
Second. Move to defer to first meeting in July. Um, we got to vote on the deferment before I can talk. Go ahead.
Bergeron?
No.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
No.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
West?
Yes.
Okay, that fails four to three.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Um, I appreciate what, uh, what we're talking about here. Um, I think the joint acting agency, uh, agreement was signature between the three communities, and wasn't, it didn't involve SEPA, so, um, I don't disagree with Carl's recommendations in that. But, um, there's a lot of reasons to defer at this particular point. For one thing, there's a meeting, um, the end of April, a SEPA meeting here in Ketchikan, where we invited all the mayors to seek, um, or visit us and, and see what's going on, and have a chance to talk about things such as this. Um, Rangel is the only community at this point that has, has made this, uh, move. Petersburg has taken no action on it, from what I understand. Um, and at a lot, SEPA meeting, there wasn't even, uh, mentioned that they, they didn't have the interest. Um, and then with Carl's recommendation, it didn't really give me any information. I would just soon have a white paper on it to understand what the benefit is of us moving ahead with such a study like this. Um, and again, this isn't a, a, a staff issue, this is a community issue. Um, and I want to make sure that it, it's for the best benefit of the community and to the region. Uh, when we talk about, uh, power and, and hydro, thermal, wind, whatever it is, on a regional aspect, um, dealing with the state of Alaska and, um, AEA, they, they have, um, the intention to, they, they would rather work with a regional entity, somebody that represents multiple communities rather than an individual. And then the funding, now you can see what's happening with the funding. An individual community is going to have a hard time to depress to, to come about with a project. This is a very, very, um, important aspect for, uh, our community, and I just, I, I just don't want to jump into something without, um, more information, and that's why I voted for the deferral. Um, we have a lot more reasons to defer it than we do to approve it at this time, and it's not running on a time schedule that is an emergency. This has, doesn't have to be done and, or enacted until end of next year, from what I understand. So, um, there's not a timetable, there's a lot of information that we can gain, and I think we need to fully understand the ramifications here, because there are things other than just owning the project. There's economic dispatches of facilities between Taiyi and Ketchikan. If, um, if we did move to own them ourselves, the power sales agreement would go away, so the, uh, Rangel could decide how much they're going to charge Ketchikan for Taiyi power, and, and we wouldn't have a, a particular voice in that. We'd have to sign a power sales agreement with them, and it could be more than a six point eight cents. And if times turn harder, and they want to up that rate, we may not have control over that. At least when we're in SEPA, we have a vote on the board. Um, so, um, again, uh, I think that, uh, after we discuss this some more, I would also make the move to, uh, to look at a deferral based on the information. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Sam?
Thank you. Um, all of those issues that Mr. Seaverton just brought up would be brought forth in a study. I mean, he's talking about the pros and cons of us owning this project individually, and SEPA as an entity as it stands now. Um, and so, you know, we're sitting here, we're, and if we're going to turn this into an argument about the continuation of SEPA, it is not appropriate. The issue on the table going forward is whether we want to engage ourselves in an independent study that would come up with physicians that would back Mr. Seaverton or others. And so I want everybody not to be confused by the discussion at the table. The issue we're talking about here is entering into a study, not, not about what the outcome of that study is going to be. And I think as policymakers and people going forward, and with the economic engine of, of our, of our region is, is power. And we're running out of power. And I think that we need to know what the best entity is going forward, and how we're going to get there. Is it with SEPA, or is it on our own? And I think a study is going to help us find that out. So I would encourage the council not to be confused by this. I think I would encourage you to go forward with this study, to join Rangel, and I'm pretty sure that Petersburg would join in as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Marty?
Yeah, I'm not confused. However, uh, we don't know what this study would cost, and I, I think that there's a whole lot of unknowns and unintended consequences that might come about for this. And I don't think I'd be prepared to, uh, to vote on this at this point, there's just too much unknown, like the cost among other things.
Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, I, I apologize to Sam, but I think this is a direct attempt to break up SEPA, that's been the whole intent of Rangel. I apologize to Carl, but he says he doesn't like being under the thumb of SEPA, and I don't believe he ever has been. SEPA has worked very hard with these communities to keep that power rate low. And I know there's some differences of opinion on how to operate SEPA, simply because, um, we can't seem to move employees back and forth, and there's, there's operational issues, but it's not the issue of providing good power to this community. I don't know how, if we, if we start messing with this right now, and we all have heard about raising Swan Lake, SEPA can take on that responsibility. We're the ones that benefit from that power. And I don't think this council is going to want to take on a $6 million bond on top of what we got to raise Swan Lake, when it's the best and most reasonable source of power. Somebody, somebody's working for us, and it's SEPA. And you might look at me as being prejudiced, because I've sat on that board for, off and on for probably four years now, and I've never seen anybody not looking out for the benefit of the community. I, I would, uh, until this whole council understands how SEPA operates, and gets a feeling for it, I don't think we should be attacking it. And it is an attack, it is an attack, Sam. Uh, I would encourage us just to simply vote this down and bring it back then. If I do defer, it wouldn't defer unless somebody wants to reconsider the deferral. But we need to just vote this down, and, and have a good workshop on, on and with SEPA.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, I understand your point, Dick, and I understand Sam's point. Um, you know, SEPA has been a good working operation. I mean, they're inviting the mayors and, um, managers to the meeting in April, and I, you know, I have my own concerns with SEPA, you know, on, um, revenues and, um, operations, and, um, how it's going in there. So there is problems between the communities, or the entities that are running Taiyi and Swan Lake right now, and SEPA. And it's, um, it's, it's out there, and it's going to have to be dealt with. Um, Rangel is pushing for this, Sam, um, is, um, on board with it, and it might come up with some great ideas. I don't know who's going to pay for it, and how that's going to be. I did call Petersburg this week, and talked to the person that would know, the city clerk, and they took no action on this item. And, um, so that's where Petersburg is on it. Um, I have no problem moving ahead with this, and looking at, um, what comes out of it. I just don't know how it's going to, how we're going to get it set up and work, but I imagine management would do that. But there are conflicts between, um, how our utility, Thomas Bay, and SEPA, and we're all going to have to work together and work it out. And it, right now, it isn't getting done. Um, but, um, like you said, Dick, um, getting these out on the table, working together, understanding how it all works, is going to help everybody. Right now, you know, when SE, when the four damn pool was going, when I first got on here, and then into SEPA, um, there wasn't much interest in SEPA and power in Alaska. Then all of a sudden, the oil went up, and everybody's switching to electric, and it's, power's an important issue now. Now, more people are interested in SEPA than ever before. And before, it just went along like nothing, it was never there. So, um, but there are issues that we've got to deal with. I'm all, I'm glad we're all going to the meeting on the twenty-fifth, and, um, we can all express ourselves. Dick's, no, Sam, Dick, and then Matt.
Mr. Mayor, and with respect to Mr. Kuz, um, my position about wanting to go forward to study is definitely not an attack on anything. I mean, we're set up here to do what, we're supposed to be looking after the best interests of the people that we represent. There are certainly questions out there about, uh, the modality of SEPA, about how SEPA is structured, certainly the power sales agreement, certainly the, uh, you know, we, you know, I think Bob wrote a letter about, you know, if grandpa was, you know, had this, and he had no liabilities, and all of that. And I, I read that, and I got to thinking about liabilities. Well, what happens if KPU owns that, and there's a catastrophic problem? I mean, KPU would deal with it, just as SEPA would deal with it. The thing that is most alluring to me about having, not having this power sales agreement is the ability to open up the electrical markets. We could go to Mr. Custer, and to his group, and we could go to the mines, and we could build that project, and we would not need, uh, funding. We're always sitting on our hands, waiting for somebody to fund us. We could do that project on our own. And if you talk about raising Swan Lake, that is such a small amount of money, considering the money that we've put into SEPA and into that organization in the past three years, we could fund it within our existing rates. We could do that project. And we could rationalize the cost of those projects in diesel savings. And, you know, I hear from the management of SEPA that burning a little diesel is not a bad thing. Well, this year, we burned a lot of diesel. We're running diesels full-time. And, you know, so I'm sitting here as a policymaker, as somebody who is tasked with bringing forward, you know, building an economy, putting in place the things that people that need to build an economy. They need cheap power, they need abundant power. We're out of that. You know, I think that SEPA has done a really good job with keeping our rates low. I have concerns going forward about building additional hydro infrastructure. I think it's a real roadblock. And I think that we would be better off if we had these facilities ourselves and did it ourselves. And I think that we have an obligation to find out from an independent consultant whether Mr. Kuz and Mr. Seaverton's concept of SEPA going forward is the way to go, or something else. So this study is about an independent view about what we should do going forward, and it's such a huge question, that we need to invest the money, whatever that might be. I mean, up to a certain point, but we need to do it. And I think the management's behind it, I'm certainly behind it, and I know others are as well. So, that's all I got.
Dick?
Yeah, I, um, I still think that we're premature on jumping into this study. Once again, the council, and I've talked to a couple of them, they really don't understand how SEPA works. And I agree with, with Lou, there are issues, but hey, we've got issues around this table, and with management. We work through those things, and SEPA has always worked through them. And that's why I think over the years, uh, the rates have continued to be low. We've got, we've got our kickbacks from SEPA. And, uh, like I say, all I'm, all I'm saying is not, I'm not saying, don't do the study, I'm saying let's, give this a couple of months, and get, have a work session on this thing, and then sit down, and we can make a better decision on how it is. Because we're, we're getting a lot of pressure. We got a pressure from an ex-legislator, which didn't quite, the facts don't back up what he said. Uh, I have to believe that some of the facts that Mr. Custer said doesn't back up what he said, but he's got something to gain. If we can, if we can bomb SEPA out, then the door's wide open. Except they've got to figure out how to get the money to build it, which they haven't been able to do yet. So I, I think we're edging on a, on a thin line here, and we just need to wait a couple of months, have a work session, and then, then we can make an intelligent decision on how to deal with this.
Matt?
One of the things that really frustrated me when we came time to, to renew the lease for the hospital was that we were at the end of a timeline already. We're at the beginning of a timeline now, and I would much rather, we begin a study now, which is probably going to take us, what, four months before it even launches, after we get everyone on board. Um, by the time it gets done, it's going to put us into two thousand fourteen, and then we're going to be in the middle of our discussions at that point. I don't want to be sitting here in November of two thousand fourteen saying, oh yeah, we have this study that we're contractually supposed to do. So I, I, more information for me is better. This is the logical next step, and we'll see where it comes, and, and we'll sit down with all the parties and, and work through it. But we have to have a starting point, and I think this is the, the best step.
Anybody else want to add anything? Go ahead, Bob.
How do you, um, suspect that the committee will be formed?
I'm not sure. We're going to, if this gets passed, um, I think, um, we'll have to talk with Rangel. I don't know if Petersburg, if they took no action on it, so I don't know if they even want to be a part of it. So if they don't, it's between Rangel and Peter, Ketchikan, if it passes.
Well, you know, I, I see in the memo here that, that Carl had proposed to put two utility guys on there and stuff like that. And I know there's friction between utilities and SEPA, but I think this has to be as impartial as it can, yet have to have knowledgeable people doing it. So I think the makeup of the committee is, is really important. And on, on Sam's issue, that, you know, SEPA wants more power into the system, too. But when you're selling power in the Ketchikan, then you also have to deal with KPU. I don't think KPU is going to sell, or buy somebody else's power ahead of using their own. Uh, they'll be in the same boat, whereas when KPU needs it, such as when we're running diesel, then we'll buy it from them. And, and I, it's no different than what we have right now with SEPA and the power sales agreement. Um, we'll utilize the best resources first, and then, after that, we'll utilize whatever we have. So don't, under the assumption that we're going to buy power from somebody else all through this process, isn't that very true? I agree, we need to have a study. I, I'm not against that. Um, I just want to make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons, and that when we move forward this, we do it, and let the facts and figures speak for themselves. Thank you.
All right, let's call the rolls, who are at.
Harris?
Aye.
Kuz?
No.
Seaverton?
No.
West?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to three.
Your Honor, I, oh, you've already said, I was going to change my vote. Say yes.
Say again then?
I was going to ask to change my vote, too.
You've already announced the call.
But you already announced the call, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, I don't, I don't, no problem. Well, let's move on. It's four three, it brings us down to vouchers, item B, or A eight.
I was gonna ask to change my vote too here.
You've, you've already announced the call.
But you already announced the call, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. The, uh, I don't, I don't, no problem. Well, let's move on. It's four three. It brings us down to vouchers, item B, or A, A.
We're gonna do seven B two.
Oh, gee, yeah. Seven B two.
Yeah, let's not forget that one, though.
Ordinance thirteen seventeen twenty-one, authorizing issuance of municipal utility revenue bonds not to exceed fifteen million. Construction of Whitman Lake Project authorizing the pledge of Ketchikan Public Utility Revenues to paid debt services, authorizing sale of bonds to Alaska Municipal Bond Bank. First reading.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to pivot in the first reading ordinance number thirteen dash seventeen twenty-one, authorizing the issuance of municipal utility revenue bonds of the city in the principal amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars. To finance certain cost of constructing and equipping the Whitman Lake Project as authorized by Resolution one-one dash twenty-four eleven and ratified by the voters at an election held therein on October fourth, 2011, authorizing the pledge of Ketchikan Public Utility Revenues to pay the debt service on the bond, provided for date, terms, and covenants of the bond, and authorizing the sale of the bond to the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank on the terms and conditions provided in this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Sam, do you want to add anything?
I don't.
Your Honor?
Yes, Bob.
Um, you know, when we went into this Whitman project, one of the things that we discussed at some length was whether or not we were gonna have a true-up agreement, um, when this thing comes online. Um, I know that there's the potential of, of, you know, if this, uh, study goes through and we decide to do something different, but I don't think that's gonna be, um, timely enough for this Whitman thing. So I'd kinda like to know where we are on the true-up agreement.
Carl?
Councilmember Severson, SEPA has forwarded us a draft methodology for our review. I've reviewed it. It's been reviewed by Electric Division staff. I'm waiting to hear comments back from the Finance Director. As soon as I have those, it's my intent to call the SEPA CEO and sit down with him and have a discussion of that methodology.
Great, thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing, and that brings us down to eight vouchers for the Daily News fifteen thirty-three and seventy-five cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, before approval of vouchers for Ketchikan Daily News, the amount of one thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Do we have a second? Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
All right, that passes unanimously. It brings us to managers' report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple. Mr. Mayor, I, I did wanna note tonight again of the pending retirement of Michael Nab from the position of Museum Director. Michael has done some very great work for us over the years, and I'm only sorry we never got to the point where we could move a museum project forward. And, uh, we're gonna start the recruitment for that position shortly. If you haven't been up to the library lately, uh, a new piece is in over the entrance, a trip to the library. You have a photograph of it in your packet. It's quite the piece. I think it's a great addition. Uh, I laid a memo on the table tonight relative to the capital budget. I won't go into the details. I will say, I think, given the fact that we did not have anybody on Senate Finance or in Senate Leadership this year, uh, we did a, did very well within the Senate's version of the budget. I'm hoping you may be able to do a little better when it goes over to the House, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that will happen and that it will not be subject to the governor's veto. Uh, last thing I have, ClearResult has been working steadily on the, uh, energy issue. Uh, they're asking for, uh, a session with the City Council. They've thrown out the dates of May twenty-second or May twenty-third. They wanna discuss the audits, the benchmarks, and rate designs, so I don't know if that date...
What are the date, uh, what's the day of the week on that?
Uh, Wednesday and Thursday.
What day is that again?
May twenty-second and May twenty-third.
And then, um...
Clerks will be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you'll be gone.
We're both gone that week.
Um, that means we don't have anybody to clerk the meeting.
That's right.
So we, um, we'll have to ask them for a different date.
We'll have to come back and do that.
Thank you.
We can't do without them, of course.
All right, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions on any items? All right, um, that brings us down to clerks' file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Um, city attorneys' file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And then, um, any future agenda items? All right, mayor and council comments. Let's start with Dick.
Yeah, just to comment on that, um, reviewing the SEPA, I guess, uh, agreement and so forth, uh, I'm assuming you're gonna come back with, uh, how the committees are going to be, the committee will be established for who we're gonna hire to do it, since I do not believe that anybody from the administration should be on the committee. It's gotta be an independent committee completely. Otherwise, we've got sting bias going into it, as we have right now. They can be consultants, provide all the information in the world, don't want them on the committee.
Sam?
I think that the, uh, the, uh, study is going to be an interesting work session. I'm sure that we're going to sit down and talk about all the, all the ground rules. I certainly appreciate Mr. Kuz's concerns about bias within the, uh, study itself. I think we should, as a council, safeguard against that and do our best to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, I'm very pleased that we decided to go forward with this study. I think that, um, you know, I, I don't know what the work product of it is going to be. I hope it's an affirmation of what we have, and if it is, it will all give us, uh, reason to go forward together in s- status quo. But I think it's going to be a really important tool. I'm looking forward to, uh, what the outcomes of that are going to be, and that's all I got.
Jan?
I want to thank all the various people that came up to speak during public comment. I find it very, very useful to get information from a variety of different entities, and the only way we can do that is by people coming up to the podium and, and providing their insight. I wanna thank the business community members that came forward as well as the individuals. I think that their, um, insight and, and comments are very useful for us in making various decisions.
Matt?
Thank you for not posting the stop sign at Pine Lot.
Yeah.
It's the best thing we did today.
Thanks for that.
Marty?
Um, I wanna thank the lobbying committee and Carl for their hard work, and congratulations on what looks to be a, a real good year for us legislative.
KJ?
Yes, sir.
Um, I also say the same thing. Good work on the cap. I just, you know, it's one cap, oh, you have to look at the House and then the governor, but at least we got it there so far, so I hope it continues. Keep up the good work, everybody. Um, anything else? Oh, sorry, Bob.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. Um, our executive session got canceled. Um, yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We are. Thank you, everybody.